How's it going?
Good.
How's Neil?
He's still in there.
Okay, we are up and going. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that.
I keep them organized.
Yeah, good luck on that. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. And take a roll call, Senda.
Commissioner Thompson.
Hi.
Roberts.
Here.
Caldwell.
Here.
Childs.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
All commissioners are in attendance.
And a work session is on your plate.
Okay, the first item up is discussion with representatives from Central District Health and Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and they are on the MS Teams.
It's looking a little fuzzy today.
They should be on.
This is bad, isn't it? This is my brain off here. I'm having a bit of a pain with my camera and...
So, the planning, we're currently going through some long-range planning. We're going to probably revisit our comprehensive plan and our ordinances, and we're rewriting portions of our subdivision codes. But the question that keeps coming up is questions about septic systems, sewers, public water systems, groundwater contamination, impact of individual wells. So we, I had sent you the questions or the topics, and I received the email from Mike on March 2nd, and I forwarded that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and everybody has a copy. So we just wanted a discussion, maybe a short presentation, Mike, from you to start with, and then questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, so right now Idaho's rules on separation to surface water from septic systems are probably the most stringent in the country. We have different setbacks based on soil type and permeability. And then I know that recently those have changed to be reduced just a little bit based on the scientific data DEQ received on phosphorus level. And so I think those separation distances have gone down to, you know, the 100-foot for sea stayed the same, two-soil stayed the same. It's now also 100 feet or feet-two soils, which are a silt loam. The sandy soils is now 200 feet separation surface water. And then also as part of those protections, the rules require a certain number of feet of soil, depending on the permeability of soil between the bottom of the septic system and the water table or other limiting layers like bedrock or hard pans or clays. And so in scientific theory, the effluent is getting treated to the appropriate levels by the time it hits one of those limiting layers after it's gone through the soil column that's required by rule. Matt want to add anything that would be great?
We can't hear Matt.
I guess I don't have anything to add at this time regarding the separation distances, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the DEQ and district relationship with it.
Do you want to just open it up to planning and zoning questions concerning this topic?
Yeah, it's fine with me.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is Ken Roberts. Can you guys hear us? Okay. So one of the questions that keeps coming up that we have posed to us by either Soil and Water Conservation District and/or concerned citizens dealing with Lake Cascade and the tributaries that feed into that and some of the phosphorus loading that's been going on over the last so many years. Is there any increased setbacks that should be considered with those other limited water quality bodies that we're dealing with?
Mike, can you answer? You want me to go?
Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, so if Mike explained, you know, we do have surface water setbacks. The setbacks were implemented, I think, sometime in the 2000s. The new haven't been updated since. We do have the technical management that Mike was discussing that allows for variance to those setbacks, and they're still fairly stringent. In some surface systems, the phosphorus is really something that impugnates the soils, and so we don't see a lot of migration of phosphorus through soils. It anticipated that most of it would bind in those 100-foot, 200-foot setbacks. But that being said, it's like the sponge, you can only hold so much phosphorus instead of water here, but until, you know, it basically has reached its point of saturation, phosphorus and then phosphorus reaches out. But that's generally on the orbit of life, the life of, the respective life.
Sorry, it's really hard to hear you, but you might have to speak up, but at least I can. You guys are sitting by the microphone or the speaker.
Can you say 50 to 60 years? 30 years.
Are you able to hear Mike better than me?
Yes.
Yeah.
But that may be because he's on his phone.
Yeah, I know that, I know this is Mike. I know the studies that Peter Adams with DEQ, the On-Site sewage coordinator, recently reviewed showed that phosphorus level, mobility in even the sandiest, most permeable soils was, I think it took it 30 years to go 100 feet. And the average lifespan of a drain field is about 30 years at the most, usually closer to 20 before it has to be replaced.
So, Mike, when you replace a drain field, and that timeframe is coming up for a lot of drain fields in this valley, you go to the alternate site, is that correct? And then I have a follow-up question.
Yeah, once the drain field fails, it's because the soils that the effluent is interfacing with the soils in is saturated to the point where it won't accept any more wastewater. And so we have to move to an alternate site, either laterally or uphill or downhill of the existing, wherever we've designated that replacement area to be, and then it starts over.
So go back to the first site, so add another 30 years to it, and it fails, then where do you go?
Well, hopefully the initial site has dried out by then and can be reused, or a lot of times we'll put in an alternating valve so that can happen. But if both sites fail, you know, and the house has been there 60 years or 40 years, we look for a third site on the property.
Okay. I think, at least from my perspective on planning and zoning, is as we start to approve, you know, more subdivisions and more drain fields, well, we don't approve the drain fields, but we approve the use of the land for that type of purpose. I think the concern is the number of drain fields, the number of septic tanks in proximity to tributaries that flow into Cascade Reservoir. It's probably not as big of a deal once you get out of that basin. And especially when we have developments happening and you'll have a central sewer within X number of feet and/or half a mile or a mile, and they could hook up, yes, it's going to be a little more money to do so, but I guess the question is, does it make sense for us to start setting some policy that would allow or that would encourage or force those people within a certain proximity of a central sewer and water system to absolutely hook up? And I do know that there is a state law that says, I think, within 200 feet, and I think we have a county ordinance that says within 300 feet, is that correct, Senda?
No, just the state one that's 200.
It's just 200, yeah. So I guess the question is, should we be doing something different, especially in areas where it's close proximity to waterways and/or the reservoir, lake itself, and then also proximity to an existing central sewer system? That's my question.
Can you guys hear me better now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, sorry about that. You know, I'll say that I would always recommend central treatment over decentralized treatment, drain field, septic tanks, just because generally the treatment plants, the treatment systems that they use in centralized treatment are designed to specifically treat, you know, nitrates, phosphorus, those things that are more concerned to groundwater or surface water.
You better refine that response because I think everybody agrees with that, but do you think we should change a policy or an ordinance at the valley, at the county level that is greater than the 200 feet required by the state statute? Is that your question?
Yeah. That's, I think that's what we're being asked to consider at times. And we've had two examples in the last three months where we've had subdivisions in, I think it was two, one for sure, within a very close proximity of a central sewer system.
So did you hear that question?
Yeah, and it's a tough question because my best regulatory answer is it depends. And really, you know, it depends on if those sewer systems were designed to accommodate those additional connections. You know, just because you have a sewer system there doesn't mean that it has unlimited capacity. It was designed for something, and generally, you know, when it was designed, they took a look at either the area surrounding it or if it was designed for a specific development, they do have a finite capacity. So it's a difficult question to answer because I don't, I'm not familiar with the facilities in Valley County.
Right, I appreciate the words, "it depends." We used to do stuff at the tax commission all the time. But I guess it may beg a bigger discussion with the long-term planning of what the North Lake Sewer and Water District, what South Lakes plans are, what McCall or the Pat Lakes Water and Sewer District plans are, what's their, what's their reach now, what's within their service area, what's in their five-year plan, 10-year plan? And as we approve subdivisions, it seems to me that if there's a subdivision that's going to be in that service area in the future, we ought to be saying something about those homes hooking up if it gets so close.
So I...
This is Mike. Something else that needs to be considered in that discussion is the density. I know a lot of the sewer districts don't like to take sewage from lot sizes that are an acre or larger just because they don't get the flows, and they become a maintenance nightmare on those main lines. So density would also have to be a factor as well as the sewage treatment plant's capability to accept the flows.
I got a question for you. It's reading down here, it said nitrates are a concern for groundwater as the soils do not pull nitrates out of the treatment column. Can you explain that a little bit better?
Yes, Mike, it's always been explained to me by DEQ and the people who do the nutrient pathogen evaluations that nitrates are not readily removed in the soil column, that they'll eventually get through the fractures, you know, when down to the groundwater. Areas where you have, down here like fractured basalt areas, it's a concern. Areas where you have, you know, a lot of clays and other confining layers like that, it's not as much of a concern. But as of right now, I know that DEQ designates nitrate priority areas throughout the state, and in Valley County, there are no areas designated with a nitrate priority status, meaning that they have elevated nitrates.
I think that's the biggest thing we've been concerned with, is the nitrates getting into our groundwater.
Can you speak up, please?
I was just telling them that, you know, that was our biggest concern when we're doing these subdivisions is concern about what's getting into the groundwater. And from what the gentleman is telling us, that just individual septic systems aren't that much of a concern. I guess that's one of the reasons that we're asking the questions.
I do have a couple of questions while we have them. Does there, Valley County has a minimum lot size of one acre for a septic system and individual well. Is there any recommendation to go higher? Is one acre adequate? Should we go lower? We've had one acre for a number of years.
This is Mike again. I think from a strictly prescriptive standpoint of having enough room for a house, a well, a septic system and a replacement area, the one acre has always been the recommendation. There, if public water is provided to the lots, you can typically go down to, and there's no wells in the area, you can typically go down to a half acre and still have room for the house, drain field and replacement area. But I'm pretty sure that one acre minimum that a lot of the counties have is pretty much just based on that prescriptive standpoint of size.
And my second question is, do you recommend a setback? Or I guess you do this already, the setback from any high-water lines, never mind.
I was going to add on to Mike's last comment there. You know, he mentioned the one acre is generally for, you know, distance between drain fields, wells, houses and all that. It's going to be very site-specific as far as, you know, reducing impacts from septic density. You know, my experience is, I've been down here in Boise region for just over six months and previous to that I came from Cooney County, Coeur d'Alene, and, you know, in Cooney County they have a aquifer that the soils underneath it are very cobbley and gravelly, and it's not great for septic treatment. And so inside the county, whether it's not centralized sewer, there's a requirement for homes to be on five-acre lots, septic systems to be on five-acre lots, and that's based on the soils in the area.
So we, we keep hearing from different interested friends that there shouldn't be septics located in or, well, within a certain distance of Lake Cascade because of the algae blooms and things like that. Are septic systems, in your opinion, contributing to those algae blooms? We're going through...
I didn't really get what you said, it was breaking up pretty bad.
Okay, we're going through a waterways management plan at this time and looking at all of our ordinances. We have had a few letters submitted to us that we shouldn't allow septic systems near Lake Cascade because it adds to the algae blooms. Is there any science behind that? That's what, is that what's causing our algae blooms in Lake Cascade? Just your opinion.
I think it would be very difficult to point at any one specific source and say that this is the cause of an algae bloom. Those are very difficult things to demonstrate. It's most likely many different sources.
So I'll follow. I was going to follow up on that question because I think that's why we're asking these questions, is because of the letters we've been getting from those individuals. And then also, I think the Soil and Water Conservation District has said in a couple places where they quote from the soils study, and it talks about the applicability of that certain soil type for a drain field. And I know the last two meetings ago, we had one where they cautioned that these soils were not suitable for a drain field. And I think that's, because if we're approving something and we're giving information that is telling us that, hey, wait a minute, we shouldn't be approving this type of a subdivision with these types of drain fields and proximity wells and things like that, and we do it anyway, and we're found to be in error, that's where we get in trouble. But if it's not something that DEQ or Central District Health is concerned about, then we need to ratchet back and say, it's probably not that big of a concern, so.
I think the response from planning and zoning has been, we rely on Central District Health and DEQ.
Right, and we're...
We don't need to be the experts in this. So if the soils really are not adequate for a drain field, Central District Health would not be approving these.
Yeah, that's correct. When we go out and we evaluate a subdivision for onsite sewage disposal, we do test holes on all lots, identify locations for drain fields that meet the rules, as well as do groundwater monitoring if groundwater, spring groundwater is a concern, which it is in most areas of Valley County. And so we make them monitor mid-February to the end of May so that we can see what the peak, the seasonal high and normal high of the groundwater table is, so that we can write our permits appropriately so that, to ensure that the effluent gets treated properly before it hits that groundwater. And then we also follow the setbacks from any surface water that's in the rules, which as I stated earlier is very, very aggressive and more stringent than almost every other state.
Mike, can you explain the difference between a septic permit and a release of a sanitary restriction, please?
Yeah, the sanitary restrictions release is when we say that the subdivision has met all the requirements and that it would be acceptable for septic systems and wells. So we, when we do the test holes and then we, an engineer is involved, they submit a report, make the recommendations, they also submit a statement saying there's adequate water to serve all the lots through wells or through a public water system or whatever they're going to propose. And then at that point, when we lift sanitary restrictions, we're saying that, yes, these lots are approved, they're buildable, you can put a septic on them. Just where that septic is going to go has not been fully determined yet because, you know, if we've done groundwater monitoring, we've had groundwater issues, we're going to designate the area for the septic system that meets all the setbacks, but a lot of times you get a property owner to buy the property when they come in for their septic permit, they want to put it somewhere else. And if it's, if it's an area where we have concerns with groundwater, we do another test hole and we make them monitor the groundwater for another year before we would issue a septic permit on that.
I got a question. Hey, Mike, this, I've been around construction a lot, and I see these, sometimes they have mound systems, and a lot of times that's because the groundwater is so high. Isn't that still putting the septic system pretty much in proximity to groundwater?
It is. There's a certain amount of treatment that occurs in the sand below the actual drain field that's sitting in that mound. Put of that sand, basically through studies have been done, so it's the same amount of treatment as a foot of a silt loam, as far as TSS, unfull suspended solids, CBOD5. There are other systems other than the mound which have gone through approval through the Technical Guides Committee from the state that have gone through NSF approval showing that they also reduce total suspended solids in CBOD5, in some cases nitrates. And those septic systems are approved or reduced to groundwater based on the treatment value you get out of the system itself.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. We, I mean, that's the biggest concern all of us have is, you know, what's getting into our groundwater? And we hear it from all kinds of organizations. So that's, this helps us make better decisions.
Yeah, I'd say that we hear a lot of different things from either an organization or individuals or people who testify, and, you know, if they come up and they say, oh, it's going to decimate the groundwater, well, is it or is it not? And if there's a legitimate concern, I think that's where we're going to lean on Central District Health and DEQ to give us the answer.
Yep.
And that's part of the process. It's just, we've been getting some conflicting information, I'll put it that way. And I think it's best that we get to the bottom of it and then make approvals that are rested on good policy.
So, can I, you mind? So we're getting, you know, some pressure to allow subdivisions, you know, off-grid subdivisions, where they wouldn't have septic systems or engineering approved, and they would be recorded with sanitary restrictions in place. What's your thoughts on that?
If a subdivision is recorded with sanitary restrictions enforced, then that prevents them from building any structure on the property that disposes of sewer or water facilities. And my question to them is, what are you going to do with the waste that you generate on that property by creating that subdivision if you're not going to have a septic system or any other means to take care of the gray water or black water? or black waste that's produced on the property when they're there?
What about the use of incinerator toilets? Vault privies, that kind of thing?
I'm sorry, you broke up when you were talking?
What about the use of incinerator toilets?
Vaults, vaults.
Vault privies?
Yeah, those are non-discharging systems that we would have to issue a permit for. And if sanitary restrictions were enforced on the property, we couldn't issue a permit for anything.
Can, if you plant a subdivision, can you release the sanitary restrictions one lot at a time?
Legally, yeah, but we don't like to do that. You know, if we're gonna, because part of releasing sanitary restrictions is getting that engineering report and, which backs us up as far as if the lots are buildable. And if somebody makes an application for a subdivision and we release it lot by lot, we're not going to get that engineering report that states that based on their professional opinions, there's adequate water to serve the developments or adequate soils to treat the effluent.
What about gray water systems if somebody just wants to camp on their property and throw their dish water out? I mean, is there a gray water system for that type of use?
Yes, there's something called a gray water stump that can be installed. But that has to meet all the same separation distances from groundwater and surface water as a regular septic system. Idaho does not differentiate between gray water and black waste disposal when it comes to the rules.
And you couldn't approve one of those as sanitary restrictions were in place?
Technically, we couldn't issue a permit if sanitary restrictions were enforced. But I guess by issuing a permit, we would technically be lifting the sanitary restrictions on that lot when we issued the permit. Some health districts do lot by lot. Central District Health's policy has just been to get the subs, to do all the work upfront. You know, hold the developer responsible for paying for that work upfront rather than putting it on the individual property owners when they buy the lots and to get all the approvals in place before the lots are sold to the block.
Do you still require NP studies or a certain number of lots? I mean, we're just getting ramped back up into a bunch of subdivisions.
No, no, Central District Health changed their policy to match more in line with the rest of the state and the DEQ. We would only require a new treatment study for a subdivision of five or more lots if it was in a DEQ designated nitrate priority area, which there are in Valley County. But the only way that I think an NP study would be down in Valley County now is if somebody proposed a large soil absorption system, a large drain field, which would take more than 2,500 gallons per day to serve at least 10 or more homes.
Maki, do you know anything about water? Waterside, public water systems?
Yeah, I do.
So how many, how many people can share an individual well? How many residential units can be on one well? And at what point do you have to have a public water system? And at what point do you have to have a redundant well?
So, again, my answer is going to be very regulatory and it's going to be, it depends. So, you know, the number of homes that can be served by a single well, you know, really depends on how productive is the well? If you have a one gallon per minute well, you're probably not gonna serve more than one house. But to answer the question on a public water system, so a public water system is defined as serving 15 connections or 25 people. And so we also, so there's that number. But from a planting perspective, for us, we look at the number of, as 10 homes. You know, so anything over or 10 homes and greater has the potential to serve the 25 people because of, generally we use census data for, you know, individual areas. And in Idaho, there's roughly about two and a half people per home. And so that's how we use the 10 households. So that's how we define public water systems. You know, like I said, for the planning, apparently you can say anything more than 10 homes, but there's, we certainly have unregulated systems that are, you know, 13, 14 homes. But once you hit that 15, you're definitely regulated, 15 homes. And then I think you had a third question.
And that requires, do all public water systems require a redundant well? Who else?
Not all, I think there's a threshold. We're reaching here, I believe there's a threshold of 25 homes or more.
And who's the regulatory agency if you have a large commercial use like an event center, wedding hall, hotel? Is it just based upon the number of people?
Yeah, it's really based on the number of people. So, you know, for these public water systems, DEQ would definitely require plans and specifications, you know, planning documents, things like that. So they'd need to be engineered. Depending on the size, we do contract some of our smaller water systems or what we call non-community water systems out to the health district. You know, it does include things like restaurants, churches as well, I believe. Basically, anything where the 20, you know, the number of people that are being served are not consistently served. So like a gas station, you might have a couple of ways, but you might have the, if you have the ability to serve more than 25 people per day, it just wouldn't be the same 25 people per day.
Anyone have any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it. And, you know, feel free to reach out if you guys have questions that come up afterwards. Don't hesitate to email Mike and I and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
You're an awesome resource.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda is impact fees.
Gary Swain is here and he's submitted a letter to the planning and zoning commission. And he asked me about the agenda so he could discuss it. I know Commissioner Roberts has been wanting to discuss impact fees. This might be a good time to at least broach that subject even though it is not a planning and zoning decision. It would be a planning and zoning recommendation to the board about, you know, how they feel. It's not a, all the agenda is a decision. So if you wanted to make a decision or some specific recommendation, it would have to be put on an agenda. This is a, you know, we're in learning mode right now so we can better do our comp plan ordinances and amendments.
So Gary? Could we invite Gary to come up to the table or?
Well, Kirby and I come up representing the
Yeah. Come on up to the table.
Do we need to take a microphone down for him? If they speak up, this microphone. Pick it up. Let me take one down just in case.
You can have mine. I got two right here.
I know Kirby can speak up for another night.
That one's fixed. Yeah.
He'll have nothing to throw at Gary, so it's okay.
I think, I think muffins is the best. You know, I couldn't start with that one. It wouldn't be as much fun.
There we go.
Here, Neil, for you to- Kirby, what was your last name?
Robertson.
Go ahead.
And each, I made another letter, copy. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I got really no dog in this hunt. We went through this back in 2007, 2008 pretty extensively. We had the Central Board of Realtors and there was quite a controversy on impact fees and a lot of things came to light. Kind of rehashing old news, but I want to give you some facts that'll help you determine because as you see impact fees, you think, oh, that's great. Let's hit the new guy that's coming in, changing our way of life and make him pay for it. That isn't the full extent of impact fees. In our comprehensive plan, the purpose is to provide direction and guidelines in making consistent rational decisions for Valley County's future growth. The number one goal in our comp plan is to accommodate growth. And the objective two of that goal is to evaluate the likely impact of the cost of services for new growth to ensure it does not create an undue hardship for the Valley County residents. This is exactly what impact fees do. You can't single out the new folks. If you agree to make impact fees, it impacts everybody. You build a garage, if you build a barn, if you build whatever you want on your property, you're gonna pay impact fees. And if you build a 500 square foot house or you build a 5,000 square foot house, the impact fees are the same. Back in 2000 and 2007 and 2008, they estimated just the McCall fire department was in on it and the sheriff department. And those fees were 5,300 bucks per household. If you put in parks and recs, road department, waters, sewers, all those impacts, this thing could be $15,000. So we're losing our middle class. Those people aren't gonna be able to build up here. The rich, people coming in with the money, I don't want to call them rich, but the ones that are coming here, they'll pay that fee. But the locals can't pay that fee. We're struggling now. The other thing that we found out was since the 70s, we've had four of these surges. This is the fourth one. And we all get excited, that's why the impact fee study was done back in 2007 and 2008 because of growth. We're there again, but those growth spurts don't last very long. They last two or three years and there's a lot of reasons for it. One is recessionary cycles like we had in the 2007 crash. Anybody that watches the news, we're coming into another one. People sell their second homes. People don't go to places of tourism. So we drop off substantially. And now we're left with impact fees for all the people trying to survive up here. And I just don't think it's fair. I mean, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot because you have those three years, but you might have a decade. The last one was 13 years. Where we struggled up here, everything kind of went back to normal. And we're stuck with impact fees. You can't pick and choose to do them one year and not do them another year. You can't say, well, you don't have to do it, but you do. And like I said in that letter, you know, what if you're trying to build a house for your elderly parents, you're trying to help your kid get a house, you're trying to build affordable housing for your employees? You're stuck with this forever. And that's why I don't think we should even consider doing impact fees at this time. The other thing I don't want you to do is to put too much credit in the impact fee study done by Ann Westcroft. She did one back in 2007. A 10-year projections. Well, it's 13 years now. We studied that. She was off by as much as 1,200% on her projections. She wants to project growth high because she's basically working for her employee. Whoever pays her to want impact fees, she's gonna do the report that way. She only took a couple of years of history when I think she took 20 years back and averaged it. But just to give you a couple of items there is that she predicted 32% growth over 10 years, it was 2.4%. She also did a calculation of capital improvements. She had something like $4.7 million for Donnelly, capital improvement needed in 10 years. I went and talked to Juan, they spent $356,000 and they got everything they want. They had an $8.7 million capital improvement for McCall firing EMS. I talked to Garrett, they only spent $1.4 million. I'm just showing you how off this report is. I think if you're gonna decide it, I wouldn't base it off of that report. I'd base it off the history of Valley County. Also, people are saying that growth doesn't pay for itself. A report was done to planning and zoning in 2008 from the Central District Board of Realtors and they proved through graphs and graphics that it does pay for itself. Just to give you a couple of examples. They turned, a 70-acre parcel was developed into Crane Shores. The original tax base on that was $568. After they created that subdivision, the tax base was $38,000, $6,000 increase. Another example, 96 acres was developed into Hawks Bay, creating 54 lots. Original tax base was $174. The new tax base on the land alone was $45,499. 26,000% increase in the tax base to Valley County. That's not counting the houses that get built on them. And that's substantially more than the land. So impact of new growth does pay for itself. I don't know where people say it doesn't. The other thing with impact fees, it doesn't solve any of our problems we have today. It can't be used for any of that. It can only be used to offset the cost of the new growth. So if you have, let's use a road, you want a road coming into that place and they're contributing to 10% of the traffic on that road, Valley County can only use 10% impact fees to fix that road. The other 90% is gonna come from the rest of us. So I, to me, that doesn't even work because you can't use them. The other big thing is you can get on the internet and look at the liability of doing impact fees. That money is placed into an account. It's gotta be used generally within an eight-year timeframe of when they collect it or it's gotta be given back to the developer or whoever pays it. And if you don't use it properly, and I think Kirby can attest to this, there's a lot of lawsuits across Idaho because they didn't use the funds properly. And I wouldn't want to see that for Valley County. And I think I've pretty much covered why you shouldn't impose impact fees. Do you have anything to add to that, Kirby?
You know, kind of here on-
You know, kind of here on, like Gary, I don't have a dog in the hunt. I don't plan on building anything anytime soon, so it's, it can impact me personally as far as an impact fee is concerned. But I think I've got two points that I'd like to make. One comes from a significant amount of time sitting on the Local and State Home Building Association, Idaho Building Contractors, Life Director, been involved, as Gary indicated, in a number of situations for municipalities and have imposed impact fees and have experienced significant litigation to the point where the end result was refunding a significant amount of money that was not being managed properly back. And your taxpayers get to pay the bill for the litigation, too. You can look up Old Cutters versus City of Haley. I was a party to that litigation through Mountain West Bank. It was about annexation fees. Those annexation fees are partially based on Ann Westcott's numbers. City of Haley annexed in as a type of impact fee. They were imposing a $75,000 per lot fee, based on per lot. Okay? And ultimately, it forced the developer into a situation where they went all the way through the federal bankruptcy court, and City of Haley got to pay legal fees and refund a bunch of money. We've seen it in Close Falls. We've seen it in Ammon. We've seen it statewide, and it's, and it's a national issue. So you're going, you're going to hear, as you dig through impact fees, you're going to hear level of service. There was a conversation with county commissioners, discussion of Johnson Creek Road. Well, if we get impact fees, we can use those impact fees over here and pave the rough stretch on Johnson Creek. You can't. You can't do it. So, you know, impact fees work well for things like we're going to support fire, and we need equipment for fire, and we're experiencing this accelerated growth, and we have to have this apparatus in the shop to respond to the fire for our new 750 houses that we're going to build and buy. But what I'm hearing is that predominance of the reasoning behind this whole thing is that we need money for roads up here. And sitting on the road board with Gary, I'm not convinced that we need money for the roads here. I don't know how much you guys have been paying attention to the process, but we discovered in the last year that we have, we, up until a couple of months ago, we had no system for maintenance tracking on our equipment. And the Road Department manages the entire fleet. Right? So we didn't know whether we had oil filters sitting on the shelves, how many, how much they cost, and what rigs they were going into. We didn't know about oil. We don't know what the maintenance cost is for, for anything. You know, so we've, we've gone through this process of putting recommendations together for the commissioners. And I don't believe today that there's adequate data for us to do any type of capital improvement plan for the county because we don't know what stuff costs. If you don't know what costs, it's going to be really hard for this group, or the commissioners, or us, to stand behind going to the taxpayers and saying, we don't know how much it costs, but you guys get to pay us some extra. I don't think that's a real valid argument, which is part of the reason that I believe the levy that was presented here a couple of years ago failed because we all went to the meetings and said, help us understand where this number came from. The answer was, well, it's the most we could go for.
Yep.
And unfortunately, I, I don't, you know, I'm not here to, to talk badly about past administration, current administration. You know, you deal with what's in front of you. But, but ultimately, we don't even know what it's going to cost to run this Road Department right now. So passing, passing an impact fee as, as an illegitimate additional funding resource when we just went through and the commissioners just took foregone, seems like a really illogical approach to try to get money rounded up for something we don't even know we need. And the other piece of this that I'd like to reflect on here is that if I go build a 1,600-square-foot house on one of these new lots that we're plotting in Donnelly, and we charge a $15,000 impact fee on that house, 12 months from now, my 1,600-square-foot house is going to be worth $15,000 more, and I'm going to be covering taxes on it. So you're double taxing based on that growth. A lot better way to put it, number one. And number two, back to Gary's comment, there are people that have built this community, built this county, that have worked at, starting at Paul's and D9 and all these other places that we have up here, that have worked their tails off for 30, 40 years, and they're living on fixed incomes. And if we charge an impact fee over here, downstream impact of that fee is going to be property tax increase on those people that are living hand-to-mouth right now, and they're getting driving right out of the community. And if we want to talk about the need for affordable housing, the exact same thing happens. My property taxes on my rental properties go up. Guess what happens to my tenant? So globally right now, there's no, there's, there's no need for those, that money today, despite what some people may think. There's no underpinning right now in the budget. Ann Westcott's studies have been found to be flawed statewide. She's a nice lady. Take nothing away from her personally, but you know, they, they use a factor, and they use stated data. They use national data. There's a lot of things going in these analyses that are not pertinent here. And they almost always overstated. And one of the biggest issues you run into when you start trying to pass an impact fee is, what is our true cost today? And if we don't know that, then we're at risk for litigation down the road because we incorrectly applied an impact fee. And what is the basis for that growth? And then lastly, what is the level of service? And are we able to actually use the money appropriately? And I don't think we're in any of those spots right now.
I've heard your guys' comments. I'd like to hear everybody's comments up here.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Cinda, I haven't seen anything this round from Ann Prescott. So where are we even at with kind of, is she hired to do this kind of assessment again? When are we supposed to see that information back from her? When does she kind of make her proposal? How long, I don't even know how long she's been working this go-around on potential impact fees for Valley County. So could you give us just a little bit of background and where that, when we might see information from her?
I, I know that she's been hired. She's under contract. And I believe over a year since she started her studies, I am not in. I think the Road Advisory Group worked on some of it. But I, I'm not privy to that information.
So could you tell us, if this is something that we're supposed to make a recommendation on, is there a timeframe for that recommendation? Is there information that we're supposed to have first? Like, like, things like Road Advisory Board budgets? And where, where they actually think that those are realistically going to be for the next five to 10 years? Is there a?
I don't know that, that they've set up. It involves setting up an impact fee group. And they have chosen their participants that are members of that group. I think the question to the Planning and Zoning Commission is more of just a general question without specifics. I mean, what is your general impression of impact fees? From what you know? If you have specific questions, I mean, I can track down that information. But they have a separate committee set up for impact fees.
There is an impact fee committee. Valley County Impact Fee Committee.
Right now?
Chosen by the county commissioners. I didn't know that. Right?
Yeah. I know that the county spent $40,000 for the study, and I know that McCall Fire put in $5,000, and Cascade, Donnelly, chose not to do it this time. And I spoke with Ann five months ago, the last time with commissioners. I haven't seen the new report.
Is there one?
And I don't know where it's done. I know it's done, but.
Oh. Could we request that it be shared in order to make this decision? Yeah.
I'd have a hard time speaking to anything on this without looking at that information.
Especially because 2008's very different than 2022.
Right, absolutely. And honestly, I was a little bit surprised that we, at the county, re-engaged with Galena, but we'll kind of wait and see what that information says. But in my perspective, I don't think we can comment on something that we haven't, you know.
No, I, I don't believe you can. I just wanted to give you this information.
Right, thank you, yep.
And the best report is of 2008 because you had the 10-year projection that the new one, you don't have to take any of that information. You could use the old one. I'm sure they parallel. But again, I haven't seen it. You know, I mean, if you.
Thank you. So a couple of comments, probably more than a couple, actually. Number one, Kirby, Gary, I, I actually agree with a lot of what you said tonight. I, I think, first of all, hearing your comments about the cyclical economy that we have here. I've lived through all four of those segments here. I've seen people come, go, go broke, leave. You can see it on an annual basis in enrollment in schools. Everybody comes in the summertime, oh, this is a great place. Gosh, it's cold. Or their job dries up. I think that, Kirby, your cautions about litigation are absolutely spot-on. And what you were talking about, I'm familiar with some of those cases as well throughout the state of Idaho. And what typically has happened in those is some of those communities said, aha, here is the silver bullet to solve all of our problems. And they put all of their effort into an impact fee. And that's not what it's designed for. The Idaho statute actually has a purpose for impact fees, and it's very specific. And that's why there's all of those studies you have to go through, and that you have to spend within so much time that it has to be used for lane miles. If you're going to add lane miles in a road or a turn lane because of increased traffic, or the new fire engine, or the satellite fire station, great, those are great uses for it. But I think what's happened in a lot of those cases where you quoted from me is that the municipality said, oh, great, this is our fix-all. And they put too much pressure on that mechanism or that tool to help solve their problems. I also like that you talked about there's, there's not been a study for what the needs actually are. I'm pretty familiar with the vote that was taken a couple of years ago. It had something to do with that as well. But there was a significant interest in the county for improving roads. In fact, the patrons of the county said, yeah, we think that's, that's an advisory vote. It wasn't worded correctly on the ballot. I think we're hearing, at least in the last three months that I've been paying attention on planning and zoning stuff, is that there is a need, but it's not been quantified yet. I think you both spoke to that, that there's, there's a need for improvement on roads, whether it's maintenance. But it's really important that, as a Planning and Zoning Commission, as county commissioners, as the county, that we say, okay, let's follow our comp plan. Because I'll refer me to our comp plan in, in what's the section? Section, chapter 11, where it's Public Facilities, Utilities, and Services. And the first goal there is establish a capital improvements program. And it talks about the effect of not having the hardship being placed on the residents of Valley County, on the citizens. And it does talk in our comp plan about making sure that growth pays its way. But you can't make growth pay for everything. And once a road is built, and once the, the fire truck is purchased, then it's up to all of us as taxpayers to pay for the replacement of that truck or to repave the road. But it's probably, you can make a really strong argument for adding that turn lane or that extra lane if you're in a certain community. That's due to growth. And that's an appropriate use for, for impact fees. I think the report from 2008 is severely flawed as well. I think it was done based on a spurt of growth. We know that that doesn't happen in Valley County. It's almost like we could have a unique Valley County growth chart that goes, you know, up and down. Because that's where we are. I don't think it's a fix-all. I think it's got a, a place. And I'm talking about impact fees. But I think we have to find out how much is needed through the eyes and the decisions of the people who live here, that work here. I think we can develop what an impact fee should be instead of paying somebody from outside a community that doesn't understand our community. But I, I really do believe that there is an interest in the local citizens that have already been here. And we hear it every meeting here. They're not paying their way, or make new growth pay its way. And our comp plan says we should do that. So what tool or mechanism are we going to use? That's, I don't expect an answer. But our comp plan does say that we're supposed to address that as a concern.
Can I speak to that? Planning and zoning puts together development agreements with developers. If we need to have a turn lane.
Voluntary.
If we need to have a turn lane, we address that with our developers, part of our development agreements. If there's a roundabout, those types of things that happens statewide. You know, there's, there's mechanisms in place to handle some of those traffic-based improvement requirements upfront through traffic studies and other things. We see it, we see it happen. I was actively involved with City Nampa when they were going through similar situation because they have all of their road base down there and the city handles it. It doesn't have, they don't have a mechanism like ACHD in Ada County. And, you know, they've, they've gone through significant processing with the recommendations that I've made to the commissioners is that we will talk to them, figure out what their plan was, what their program was, and, and see what we can adopt here that makes sense.
Are you hooked in?
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
You know, Ken, we always sometimes want to throw money at stuff.
We always do what?
We want to throw money to solve a problem. Road Department carried twice their annual budget over this year. Our budget's right around 4, 4.7. We carried almost $9 million over. It's not a funding problem at the Road Department. There's other issues there that we're dealing with. So always thinking we need more money to solve a problem isn't always the case. And, and unfortunately, we don't, in Valley County, don't have a really good record of how to get money out of people. I mean, the inclusionary zoning, the lawsuit where City of McCall lost, the road development agreements. They didn't work out well.
We won that case.
Yeah, but they didn't work out.
And it's because they're basically voluntary is the way I understand them. Is that correct, Cinda?
They are voluntary at, at this point. But we're trying to work with the state to change this code so that we can do development agreements if there was a, a change. This allows development agreements if there's a change in zoning. It should say change in zoning. I would like to say, or change in land use. Or.
Or replod.
Or replodding. Right. So there are efforts to change this. So this might be an alternative to that.
And what that would do is, would allow road development agreements?
Well, I can't hear.
And the point to that would be to create voluntary road development agreements?
Would be, would be to work up a development agreement with people.
Individually.
Who are changing their land uses. Who are changing their land uses or plating. Right now, it has to be all voluntary.
Mr. Chairman, Sinda, how often are these voluntary developmental agreements not followed?
They're always followed because they're voluntary.
They weren't followed by the county once you gave the money. I did. They didn't use the money in the timeframe. That they did, I questioned three different times, requested the money back. And that was 10, 15 years ago. They weren't used. Remember, they had the zones where you spent the money in certain zones? And, yeah, I remember the tax credits, yeah.
Yeah, there weren't a lot of other activities out near Roseberry Ranches. But that was more of, I think, a bookkeeping issue. And, I mean, the county has to have money to use it also. And there was hardly anything going on out there. Let's not get into that. But this is the alternative, impact fees. And so we'll see.
That seems like the best way to do it.
Help give you a tool to work with to get around some of these issues.
If I were to make a request to the planning and zoning group today, my request would be to allow us time to figure this out and to delay making a decision on this. The reality of the situation is, you know, I'm a landowner up here, I'm a taxpayer. And I have never opted paying my share. What we've been working through as far as the road piece of this world is concerned, not fire trucks and other things, but roads, is to try to determine what it really costs us to run this department. Really try to figure out what kind of shortfall we really have for major projects and how we plan those. And ultimately come to a number in conjunction with improvement and management of that department, without getting into any details there, to show the public that they can actually maintain our roads and fill our potholes and get the snow plowed within the budget that we've got. And then we've got these extra projects. And then, instead of imposing impact fees, those people that sit on this road board, I think if we can all get comfortable with what a real budget is, all of us are happy to go back to the people that live around us and in this county and say, "Okay, now we have a real number and we need to pass a levy to support the roads." And avoid the liability that goes along with impact fees and all the other pieces and parts that, you know, the waterfall affects the property taxes and things. And just fund it from where it needs to come. That would be my request sent here tonight.
You know, and I read, when I was reading this, I read your letter several weeks ago, whenever you sent it out originally. And I was reading this lady's stuff. And I like facts, I like actuals. Actuals is what you threw out here. And it's like, this is very Valley County. It's actuals. Because I've been in the construction industry for 30 years up here. Growth is what the rest of the world sees as growth up here. Growth down there in Meridian, Eagle, that's growth, that's people, that's bodies. And impact fees down there might work because they need infrastructure for the fire stations, you know, services, police, whatever. Up here, growth is a lot of buildings. And we haven't had people. Probably got less people now than we did before this big boom started. We can't afford to live here anymore. So it's, I remember our school superintendent, Terry Donick, he was over our school district in Chouse when they started that big mine over there. He said, "Man, we had money, we had people." Built new schools, infrastructure, that mine put in so much money to us. And 15 years, he said, the mine went shut. He said, "Everybody left." We're here with this huge school and just a few kids. And he said, "That's real life, it happens." We may see that happen some here. Just have night, we really just roll. We don't know. That's a whole different money source that will come into this valley. Impact fees, in my personal opinion, while I've read and heard testimony and from other people besides who are sitting here, I'm not a big fan of them, too specific. And personally, Neil, I wasn't for it, but I still want to hear more information.
I got tons of, I learned nobody ever reads past the page, so I always got to put it to P&amp;Z on one page because if you got two or three, you guys don't read it.
Smart man.
My fear is I don't want to lose the middle class up here. That's what makes Valley County. I don't want to have all these wealthy, upper-middle-class people and a bunch of federal-funded, affordable housing in the service-oriented community. I've seen that happen too many places. We got the opportunity, I think, not to allow it to happen. If I have a goal, that's the goal I'd like to see.
I just want to ask you a question about that. So how do you control the real estate market prices?
It controls itself, Ken.
Talk to her.
I mean, I was actually selling lots for more money pre-crash of 2007 than I'm selling them now. So there's still room to keep going. But it takes care of itself. When this crashes, and it will, then it all comes back to normal. So I don't know that you have to control it. It controls itself. It has three other times. Why wouldn't it do it now? You can't sustain this. This is unsustainable. And I was told there was close to a billion dollars lost in 2007 after the crash came up here. That's a lot of money. And I was going around buying distressed properties and, boy, a lot of money lost. You're buying stuff for 20, 30, 40 cents on the dollar. So it does recorrect itself.
I just, I agree that it'd be nice to keep the middle class in the area and not put an extra burden on them. I don't know how you do that with the external factors. But we can do some things in Valley County. We don't want to exasperate them. A lot of that stuff happens because of external forces on the economy and on our community. People come here with a truckload of money and they unload it and they buy their 20 acres or 40 acres or whatever they buy and they build their $4, $5 million house. Those houses don't go away. And I think what we've seen in the last, every time that thing goes up, we see a number of those homes being built up, things being bought. Those typically, you guys might correct me on this, but they don't seem to change hands as often as the others.
I don't know.
Some different money there.
I just, I...
Ones that aren't.
I think it's, because part of our charge from the commissioners, the letter that they just wrote us, is to, it says, "We are receiving continual input on the concerns citizens have for growth in the county. But ideas can be recommended to mitigate these concerns." And some of those concerns are having growth pay for itself. Our comp plan talks about that. It talks about, under objective 2, number 2 objectives, says new development shall not be allowed to overload existing services. And so I think there's a balance somewhere. But I look forward to you guys completing your work from at least the road departments in that area to see if there is something that we should be doing. Because we get these sub divisions, it's four lots, it's eight lots, it's 10 lots, it's 137 or whatever it was the last month. And they just keep coming. And in the back of my mind, I have this, you know, we put on the condition, what's the condition, Sinda, we put on it, that they must meet with the commissioners?
Right. They have to...
Verbiage says.
Discuss off-site road improvements with the Valley County Road Superintendent and the board of county commissioners for the potential of a development agreement. And if they can't voluntarily come to an agreement, then it may be remanded back to the planning and zoning commission to determine whether or not it's safe and accessible. If they're not going to improve through it.
So we send that on to the commissioners. And do they have the tool necessary? Or are they making the decisions? Or are they getting a return on their voluntary agreements that's actually funding something? Or making an impact? I don't know. But I think it's a good discussion for us to have.
Well, from a person's standpoint, I know there's a lot of influx of people running away from someplace else. Oregon, worship in California, rather be the crime, the taxes, whatever. Running here, and I've never seen this before. They don't ask about the problems here. They just buy. And I think when this dust settles, you're 100 miles away from major services. We don't have a lot of great services. We don't have great roads. They might want them.
But they're starting, Gary, what they're starting to do is during these meetings, planning and zoning meetings, they're starting to fill those benches behind you. And granted, some of them come in with the mentality that, "My golly, I got my piece. Let's slam the door and they'll let anybody else in Valley County."
That's most of them.
And when they stand up there and say that, I say, "Next." Because I've heard that for years. It happened when I was on P&amp;Z Commission the first time. To me, that carries no weight. But when somebody stands up there and speaks about a legitimate issue and a legitimate impact, I'm paying attention. And I want to hear what they have to say. But if it's just griping about, you know, "I got my piece, let's shut the door," forget it.
What I'm saying is they solved their immediate problem in getting out of wherever they're going. They don't realize the problems we have here. We've had them for decades, the same problems. They're not going away anytime soon. I feel those people won't stay.
I think you're right in some cases, yeah. We are a sparsely populated rural central Idaho valley. We have thousands of miles of roads, I think, in our road system. By the time you come back to me.
Yes.
And we have a handful of taxpayers favored.
There's a bunch of them.
And it's the same scenario that Idaho as a state has because Idaho is a sparsely populated state, a big geographic area. And guess what? We're in the Rocky Mountains. We've got frost thieves that tear up our roads. It's much more expensive to maintain it. That's why we're a donny state. We get money from the other states with transportation. It seems to me that somewhere along the line, if a small reasonable impact fee makes sense, that it's not going to get us drug in the court, maybe that's part of the solution. Maybe another part of the solution is a road department levy that was tried a couple of years ago. Ask the question, I think it'll pass, especially if it's a temporary two, three-year thing, right? Every time you have a project that comes up that says this project was paid for by those $2, put a sign on there so the public can see what it is.
That's one of our recommendations. And if we can show, I'm thinking it'll take a year, that we can get the Road Department back to maintenance and not having the potholes, to fixing the shoulders. Maybe we can't repay big sections of road, but we can get the roads passable at the speed limit that is shown on the signs. I'm thinking people will respect that. And when we say now we are out of money, and it will come, it's not now, but it will come, then we pass the levy for better improvements.
But you can see why we are concerned when we keep passing these subdivisions and adding more people, more impact. Are we doing the right thing? Are we recommending the right thing to the commissioners? That's where you guys as a Road Department Advisory Committee funding, the commissioners, the planning and zoning have to work in concert so that we are all on the same team.
Did I hear you correctly? You're saying, Gary, that you feel like it's going to take about a year from now for you guys to have a kind of a cohesive understanding of what's going on at the Road Department and a plan?
Yeah, I would say, wouldn't you?
Longer, I think it's... It's relative to what our commissioners do with what we recommend to them. You are, we don't have... Lay it out. We don't have an HR mandate intentionally when we develop this group. We do believe that there's some historical management issues. Everything from budgeting to other things and just management globally from the county for that department to provide them with tools to actually figure out how to run their department. And until we have that, I think, you know, to Gary's comment, I think it's going to take us a year to be able to show the public as far as going back for another levy. A year of solid performance from this department with the recommendations we've made to the commissioners to be able to prove to you that you should vote for your taxes to go up to start supporting this Road Department. And it'll probably be longer than that before we really need the money. You know, the other side of that coin is getting within that 12-month period to prove to the county or the voters that they should vote for this is partly, has been intentionally laid off to the commissioners as managers of that department to ensure that they're maintaining accountability for the success of the plan that we brought to them. And so part of, you know, like you said, working together to try to find that solution. We believe we've identified the significant, the big underlying issues, that, you know, not the sniffles, but the cold virus. And provided some basic solutions that can be managed in an HR manner and to ensure that we can show the community that that department can perform. And then at some point in time, we feel like we can probably get that levy passed, like the advisory vote you talked about previously that was worded incorrectly. I think the support is there. I mean, I'm not allowed to have Facebook because I'm told that I would respond and tell people, "You live in Idaho, get a truck and slow down and quit being a baby."
No, not true.
I know. Which is my response to a lot of things. But ultimately, we've got to resolve the road issues. It's a thing. And speaking to your point, every time you approve a subdivision and I read about it, I get queasy, not because I don't want growth. I'd like to see managed growth. I think it's important that we identify the two. But I think it's going to take a little bit of time to get the pieces and parts into play to be able to go for that levy. But I believe that it's passable if the things we've recommended are done correctly.
Right. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead.
I think you raised a really good point that it's going to take some time to get that put together. Maybe a question for both of you is what Sinda read is what we have been putting on the conditions of approval. Is that adequate? Are we doing what you think we should be doing on these subdivisions? You say you get queasy when we approve another subdivision. Are we doing enough? That's a question for both of you.
Well, I wish it wasn't voluntary on the road improvements that this board might put upon a developer. Having said that, I think you should do the maximum at this point that you can impose fees on that person that's going to change the land use. I mean, that a lot of them, and it comes down to the bottom line. Either I can do this and there's a financial reward at the end, or there's too many hurdles, I can't, and I don't do it. That's the decision for the developer. I mean, not necessarily for planning and zoning, but if all this new development coming in from out of town is drastically changing and we're concerned about it, I think we should put as much pressure on them as we can to provide better roads. should put as much pressure on them as we can to provide better roads, better services. If that answers your question.
It does. I want to come back to what Kirby said.
I think, I think what you're presenting to them, for them to go to the commissioners is really going to be relative to what the commissioners' stance is going to be on this. And as with so many things, a cohesive plan across all of the stakeholders and people that are involved in this approval process, here's what we want. And, you know, it's the old, you know, where you say no and then you can come back and negotiate to get to a yes. You know, say yes, but put, put as much on there as we can possibly put on there and then negotiate off that if it's necessary. But it still comes back to Gary's comment. This is a profit motive business. Sasha knows.
Yeah.
I mean, we all know it. You know, it's, it's a profit motive business when we develop land and we build a vertical space, whether it be commercial or residential use. And if the requirements are such that you no longer are profitable building a house at 650 bucks a square foot or whatever it's costing here now, all of a sudden, that house doesn't get built and our queasiness over the next 750 lots or whatever we're doing starts to peel back because it gives us time to try to figure out this road thing, which I keep coming back to because that's the reason I'm here tonight is primarily driven by the roads. But if, if, you know, if that recommendation can be specific, we would like the commissioners to, and, and here's what we want. Here's our wish list out of planning and zoning because we know we're going to need this turn lane to accommodate the increased traffic flow for Craig Grove subdivision and Donley. Not to single him out intentionally, but that's the most recent one that I've talked to him about. If we know we're going to need those things, then let's ask them to voluntarily get on board and let's have the commissioners hold his feet to the fire as long, and if the profit motive isn't there, there's always that give and take. I mean, I've seen it in, you know, I've financed development for a lot of years, so I'll sit here and tell you I've been part of the problem my whole career.
On the other side.
Well, and, and, and that's the reason I'm involved because I want to see some positive things happen out of this. But I've seen it in every community I've ever dealt with, from Sun Valley, Ketchum, Haley, Boise, Redding, Napa, you know, Ontario, every place I've ever done a project, I've always gone with my clients and, and been at these meetings. And they don't just say, yeah, sure, go for it. They say, yeah, we'd love you to be part of our community. Here's what we need you to do to have you be part of our community and improve things to the extent that you want to do that. And, and I, I think the new, the, the new verbiage that Sinda popped up earlier, I believe that that's, from what I gather from Commissioner Mop, and there's some, some traction on that at the State House right now, session down Boise, to maybe change the verbiage of that, which would help us immensely as far as road development agreements. And that as much as, as much as we can bring to the commissioners and those developers to put the pressure on to help support this process, you know, and within some boundary of fairness too.
And I think for us.
And that's, that's the hard measure.
For us to be able to stay within the law that we're stuck with, you know, it's, it's hard to push and say, oh, by the way, you need to do this. We don't have a tool behind us.
Yeah.
You can't be arbitrary.
No.
Exactly. And, and hopefully, hopefully our representatives downstate help us get some of that resolved this session and hope that it'll get that far.
So both of you mentioned about putting on some, I'm not going to call them impact fees, but some.
Conditions of approval?
Yes, that have a monetary impact. Basically said, to sum it up, you said, get as much as you can to help our community pay for these things. And Sinda, this is going to go probably to you, but do we put those on as conditions of approval right at this level as a recommendation to the commissioners? Or do we let the commissioners do that on their own?
Well, previously, we had their capital improvement program for road development agreements where we had done the whole capital improvement study, determined, you know, capital improvements that need to be done, abstained the, the build out of a certain area and then came up with a number per lot that we applied to each subdivision in a fair manner across the board. In 2007 or, or somewhere around in there, we dissolved that. We were getting hit with some lawsuits, development had stalled, there wasn't anything going on. I mean, it really didn't matter anymore. So we have thought about that more, thought about the impact fees. This condition that we were putting on subdivisions pushes that discussion to the Board of County Commissioners and the road department with what those improvements need to be in the meantime and until they figure out if they're going to do development agreements, impact fees. Other discussions that are being brought up are CIDs and LIDs.
Right.
What are those?
One of the things that we're getting back from the road department on these applications is well, the no comment. Should that be the response?
Only if there, if a county road doesn't lead to it, such as the highway, like growth. That's, that's all state.
Can I ask a question? On, did you call it a capital improvement plan? Is that what it was previously and you dissolved it? So how, what was, what's the constitutionality of putting in a capital improvement plan now? And how is that monitored? And how can that be dispersed?
For the record, this is all my non-legal disclaimer.
That just sounds like a better option.
It, it sounds to me like we should send our attorney in.
Right. Maybe Brian needs to come back.
Anyway, we need to change 67, 65, 11A, and I've been pushing for years to get that changed in order to do the development agreements. Otherwise, it has to be 100% voluntary. If they change that 67, 65, 11A, then we can enter into development agreements.
It's like two words they got to change or something.
Yeah. I mean, I've had this conversation for over 10 years with a current representative. We'll see what happens. That needs to happen. And then we, in my opinion, disclaimer, I think we could do development agreements. Kirby might know more. He's at a different level than I am.
The question I have about item 14, is there something to preclude you from saying, okay, we're going to permit a plat with 12 houses, they're going to be, you know, the subdivision is, as it's being proposed, are going to be 1,200 square foot houses designed towards workforce, workforce housing. So the assumption would be that these are going to be local citizens and they're going to add X number of trips per day on our roads. And that's going to require, because it's ingressing off of the S Bridge, that it's going to require turn lane. Can you itemize in your recommendation for this section 14, recommend addressing the issue of turn lane funding for this? I mean.
Or towards that project?
Yeah, yeah, specific to that project. And I, and I honestly, I don't know. But if, if you can send this with our developer to the commissioners with some specificity to what this group has discovered with all of the research you guys do, because that's planning and zoning. You guys know the rules, you know the research, and then they're going to approve it or not. If they read this and they see a list of bullet points that say, we need to address, you know, turn lane around about it, you know, blinking light.
Your S Bridge is a perfect example. Every lot that's been sold west of there, well, of course, should have contributed something to the street.
And we also made recommendations being proactive to the commissioners. And one was any new subdivision, you get them to bring the roads up, pave them, whatever they have to do. And they dedicate them to the county, but we don't plow them. They create until things change and levy passes, however that key, that they create HOAs and they plow their own roads. Because Jeff was, Road District Attorney was saying, you know, you got three different roads going into one house way back then, they got to plow the whole thing for that one house that's built back there. And I don't know what the commissioners did with, with that, but I thought that was a decent recommendation to not add to our problem at this point in time. And I created.
They won't take public roads. They won't accept a, a public road or a dedicated public right of way unless it's paved.
Right. But within the subdivision boundaries.
They have private roads. They can do private roads that are, that are built to standards. It's lesser standard than a public road.
But we've been plowing all the subdivided roads that were done in 2008 and before that.
Only if they agree to. That's a county commissioner decision. We put this note on here. And Valley County Board of Commissioners have the sole discretion to set the level of service for any public road, levels of service can be changed.
So have they changed it to where they're not having the county plow? Because that was Jeff's big concern, was he had to plow all these subdivision roads clear to the end and there was one guy living back there.
Those are old subdivisions that the county has been plowing for decades. Those aren't new subdivisions.
So what you're telling me is all new subdivisions now plow their own roads?
Unless they're a dedicated public right of way that's been paved and accepted by the Board of County Commissioners and are a loop system like Crane Shores, Ox Bay.
What I'm saying is you dedicate those roads, bring them up to county standards, but you don't plow them.
Well, they typically don't unless it's on the pathway. I, I don't know of any that they do.
I think that the commissioners adopted our recommendation of taking on no additional miles of plowing. I think that was an official decision they made as part of their recommendation package for the time being.
Hasn't been going on for 10 years.
Yeah, but that's part of what we got to weave through.
So, Mr. Chairman, my perspective is we kind of have the cart before the horse here. Someone is proposing, or a group is proposing these impact fees without presenting all of the information. Planning and zoning has an obvious kind of feeling that maybe there's another more beneficial way too, as our plan states, to make growth pay, but not to impact the middle class. We all know that's very important here. Is it, is it growth here? I think it's a big question, like you commented, Ada County or Henn County versus here. I had some notes, but, you know, I think we have a lot of second homes coming. People see Highway 55 packed Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Thursday, Monday now. Is it that growth? Is it tourism? Is it a combo? And how, how do we account for both? We see a lot of developments here that have been in place that had a lot of people. I've seen this place packed back in 2008, being involved in a development where people were unsure that particular development of 130-something lots has 17 full-time homes in it. So I think we can say it's all development are causing these issues. But like Mr. Swain said here, we have a $9 million rollover on, on the road department. Is growth really the issue? Possibly. I think we need to let their group do their job, take some time, figure it out. We need to continue this discussion, try to make number 14 as firm as possible. But really, right now, today, there's nothing that we can do until we get more info and see the direction that this group that's proposing these impact fees is going to go toward.
Yeah, and our purpose was just to give you more information.
Which we really appreciate, both of you being here. Because we know it gets late.
I would love to carry on this conversation maybe in my office about traffic studies, ASHTO standards, and plowing. Those decisions were all based upon when we had to make a million dollar budget. And they have felt obligated to continue those plowing operations and they've never stopped it. But we can talk about it.
That's, that's a level of service, once you've created the level of services.
Can I go? I don't want to, I'll just close by saying this. I think what I am hearing from both Kirby and Gary is that, back to number 14, is that we should, are you saying that we should be bold and maybe making some more specific recommendations to the board?
Yes. I, I, that, that's really your role in this, is we, we recommend approval or denial or conditional approval of this, whatever it is, commercial residential plat with the following proposed issues to be resolved by our commissioners.
And for now, we'll leave the dollar figures off of those subpoints, is that right?
Well, and, and I don't know that there's a dollar figure attached to it because ultimately the dollar figure is going to be borne by the developer.
Right.
You know, if, if, if the developer needs to put a culvert under, he's going to arrange with the road department to close that road, do the notices, dig the road up, get the culvert done, and he's going to write the check to whoever the excavation and paving contractor is.
But your S Bridge.
Would that be a road department? Isn't the road department the one that knows what improvements need to be made on the road?
They should.
We would think so. We'd hope so.
Again, we're going ahead of our experts. And I think we need to look at the legality of everything that we can do, what we can impose.
That's, yeah, that's bottom line.
And I've had a brief conversation with counsel about some of these things. It is, how, you know, what are the sideboards that P and Z can use in these recommendations? And it would, it would be P and Z to have that conversation, so what can we do within the sideboards of the law as far as recommendations based on the studies and surveys that you've reviewed when you present for approval to the commissioners?
Because I would think the commissioners, you know, when they get the proposal to them, the condition is permit, and they're charged with answering number 14, they're going to, well, this is the first I've heard about this. I wonder what our P and Z commissioners thought. And that's where I think that I'm hearing that some sort of a recommendation that has something to it to the board to help them. I mean, that's a discussion we need to have with them as well.
And your commissioners are dealing with a lot of different issues. Some of them are not development experts. You know, they're not necessarily road experts. They're, you know, the stuff all flows to there. And they need, they need good, good data to be able to decide what do we need to look at in item 14, as opposed to we may have never even driven down this road in this county as a commissioner.
You know, I, I agree with that to a point in that if you have a good road department, and I look at all these other departments, if you have a good road department that takes ownership of what they're doing, because I believe, you know, if I have to do your job, I don't need you. That's kind of the way I look at the world. And so if you have a good department out there, no matter its roads or what it is, they know what's going on, what needs to happen, or whatever's coming up with, you throw at them a big subdivision, they, they're going to come to us and say, hey, we need this. How do we go about getting it? And that's the kind of departments that these guys need to know, that we need to speak up and tell these commissioners or tell the planning and zoning, look, if this is, we've got a problem here. If you're going to add this subdivision in, this is a real issue we have to have brought, you know, to the table. And it's just bringing them up to speak and empowering them. They'll speak up because.
They'll speak up because we can't fix it.
I think you, I think you connected the dots for us here, in that recommendation has got to come to send that in the staff report so that we know what should be on there.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Totally agree.
Hey. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your input. We're going to take a break.
Great.
We're just getting started now.
Okay, I'm going to mute.
The planning act is a part of the state statutes. It gives us our powers to do zoning, comprehensive planning. It tells you as a planning and zoning commission what you're supposed to do. It talks about impact areas. It talks about development agreements. It talks about subdivision ordinances. It talks about short-term rentals. Everything we're allowed to do or not allowed to do is mostly in this chapter. So I don't know if you want to quickly breeze through it or if you want to take the time to look at it on your own. For example, you know, it talks about the purpose of this act. All local governments are supposed to participate. Planning and zoning commission, how you create it, the membership, organization rules, records, ordinances. You have joint planning and zoning commissions, planning duties. Your big one is the comprehensive planning portion. That's in sixty-seven, sixty-five oh eight. It talks about how to notice hearings. In sixty-seven, sixty-five oh nine. You adopt, you know, POP plan with a resolution. You adopt an ordinance. It talks about, you know, your duties and the board's duties if they have a planning and zoning commission. Now that each of you, you know, kind of wet your feet, I think this would be a really good read for you. A lot of this doesn't really apply to us, like contained animal feeding operations. That's no more down in the southwest part of Idaho. Transfer, it talks about planning and development. Planning and development, it talks about transfer of development rights, which we really don't do in Valley County because we don't assign a unit to each acre or anything like that because we don't have the equivalent type of zoning. What those are is if you want to reserve some open space, you can take your densities from that open space, you know, like one house for every acre, and you can make something higher density in a different area. They do that like down in Washington County.
Kind of like what we do with clustering and shoveling.
Right, but yes, we like to promote clustering with some open space.
Right. I hear open space all the time.
What section was added?
Development rights is in sixty-seven, sixty-five fifteen. And sixty-seven, sixty-five eleven A was the development agreement.
And that's what we were discussing, right, earlier? That's when you pulled up?
Sixty-seven, sixty-five twenty-one. Actions affect the person. That would be kind of interesting to read. An affected person. I mean, one having a bona fide interest in real property which may be adversely affected. So that might be interesting for you.
Which one was that again?
That's sixty-seven, sixty-five twenty-one. That talks about, you know, everything has to be writing that funding for a fact. And then we get to, I mean, combining of permits. That's where we'll do a CUP variance all at the same time. Or just ordinances moratoriums. That's what we did last September.
Was that long ago already?
It talks about, you know, changes in planning station. Talks about impact areas. Things you can do with that. Talks about penalties. Oh, this is a good one. I love this one. Sixty-seven, sixty-five twenty-eight. This is where every state agency has to comply with local land use, planning ordinances.
Nice.
Except for endowment land. They're constantly.
So IDL?
Yes. Every state agency is supposed to comply with our rules. IDL doesn't have to on endowment.
Right. Is there anybody else that has endowment lands or just IDL?
Just IDL.
But not all IDL is endowment.
Right, right.
Right, I knew that.
That's a fun one. It needs to be ITB unless it's a important highway system of some. The CAFOs. Contain animal feeding operations. That's a big deal. Everyone was, you know, putting in their high-density animal things and the nitrates and things were going into the. They have cesspools. So, I mean, this is something you kind of have to read on your own. And we can have a special back to it to find your answer. Right, and in the state statute.
Oderage was plans.
We adopted our hearing procedures. I guess some people hadn't, so they had to put it in the state statute. We have to have the transtribal record. That's why everyone needs to speak loudly and clearly, one at a time.
Ken's getting better, you notice that?
Yeah.
He's using his other voice.
And then they changed the grandfathered use to use for design purpose protected in making pictures. That's just grandfathering. And then the last thing they did to us was the short-term rentals. Sixty-seven, sixty-five thirty-nine.
Is this the one? So sixty-seven, sixty-five oh nine A is the manufactured homes? And because we're doing that special meeting next, right? Our special work session on that?
We are having a. We received the application Friday. So we're not going to talk about this specific application today.
Right.
But it's a manufactured home part where they'll retain ownership of the land and the units will be owned by individuals.
So they'll lease their spot?
Yes, into perpetuity. It's a planning and development. It's high-density. It's on central sewer and water.
Central sewer and water.
And so it sets a special meeting so we can go through all of the issues with the planning.
What did we say that that special meeting date was?
May.
May fifth. You're talking about Thursday, right?
We have some time then, huh?
We're going to have our own special meeting that night for that one.
I have to get that note.
And if you want to pick up your applications early, just let us know.
Where's that one at? Where's that one at?
Ascentive. The next phase of the Meadows at West Mountains.
Cindy, Scott is wondering if he can get his binder tonight after this meeting.
Yeah, why don't you go get all five binders and we'll just give them to him tonight. Before our April meeting for the May. Oh, for May, oh. So you can start looking through that PUD.
And that's just a special meeting for that.
If you guys agree to. A lot of times for the PUD in the past week, you know, held an initial public hearing. It's like, oh, man, we need to think about this. We need.
Right, we don't know.
So this is table it to the next week.
This isn't the public hearing. May fifth is not the public hearing.
It is the public hearing.
Okay.
May sixth is. It's not just us discussing it.
It's the public hearing. The applicant will be here. There's no pressure because there's nothing after.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's just a special meeting is what this is.
It's a special public hearing.
I thought we were going to do a special work session specifically on that prior to so we knew what we were doing.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
All of that comes in a public hearing process.
Thank you. I'll be sick that day.
You'll be sick that day.
So there are other codes that, you know, in Title fifty, it tells you how to do subdivision projects. You know, the eighty-two is the impact fees. So there are other parts of the state statutes that are sometimes applicable. But this is the local land use planning act that was adopted, I believe, in seventy-five. It required everybody in the state to do comprehensive planning process.
So these two gentlemen that were up here, they're going to weigh in on this, this subdivision. Central sewer and central water.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's a big one.
That's in addition to those other seven hundred and whatevers.
That doesn't come to us, does it?
The one on the highway that is going to be annexed instantly.
Right, second.
The other one that I don't have an application for.
Don't need to talk about.
That's our local land use planning act.
Okay, thank you.
The next thing was review of the Valley County Comprehensive Plan.
That's a one day.
This was last revised, the twenty-sixth, the twenty-eighteenth. And I think you're supposed to look at it like every five years. Oh, here, let me check my local land use planning act.
Cindy loves that, I think.
What?
Cindy loves the land use planning act.
I do, but I don't know that I can put my finger on it. It's supposed to be regularly updated. They used to have a time, like every five to ten years.
You don't anymore?
I don't see it automatic.
I had a feeling eighteen, but thirty-four is.
Are there plans to redo this?
Well, I think as part of your long-range zoning discussion, we'll be making some sort of amendment to this. I mean, the state statute used to say that areas in the impact area had to be, we expected to be annexed within the next twenty years. Well, they took out that defined twenty-year time. So they changed this periodically. So I have to find out how often we're actually supposed to do this. But we last did it November twenty-sixth, the twenty-eighteenth. So that was one of the directives the board of county commissioners wanted to think about. Do you think we as a body can do the necessary amendments to this document in order to either continue to do what we're doing now with our one-zoneable use or do we need to do a major overhaul and do the equilidian? That's one of the things as we go through this learning process and become more familiar with the ordinances that you're going to be deciding. Now, with our defense, I know that if you think we want to hire some contact planner to come in and go through a big public meeting, public hearing process and revamping of our comprehensive plan, they would like to know, you know, this year, if they need to set aside the money to do that. Or do you think we need it? So I really would ask that you read this document and look through it and see if you think this is still applicable to Valley County. I mean, where do you think it's necessary?
What if we, if we do amendments to this? I mean, what kind of direction are we have to us to know what to amend and change?
You might want to take it to. We might just want to have a public hearing and ask the public, what in this document do you think needs to be amended?
They'll never read that.
Welcome, Will.
Give me three.
So, I mean, maybe that's where we're going with this. Maybe that's what we're going to decide by May. We need to just have a public meeting and ask people if they want to see a new comprehensive plan process.
Well, wouldn't we need to as a board though, need to have us a work session on this before we brought the public into the realm? I think that would. I think if the five of us read this and come back with our five inputs.
Whether or not we should do it or not.
Yeah, before we bring in John Doe or Jane Doe.
You and Scott are really well-versed in it, right?
He is.
And what?
He's elder on the board.
Would you like to do this maybe at the next work session? I mean, I know the fire departments are coming in. At the, what, third Tuesday?
Think we can fit that in?
And we can fit this right after that. And everybody is assigned to work. Read through the comprehensive.
Make notes in it. We can write in it, make notes in it.
Right, because this document is our guide. It's our guiding rule. It tells us what goes in that part. We don't really change our ordinance until our comprehensive planner is at stake. The ordinance implements the comprehensive plan. Our decisions are based on the ordinance, not the comprehensive plan.
Right.
You assess it based, you know, an application on the comprehensive plan that you implemented.
The comprehensive plans may see the guideline to.
It seems like a great place to start.
You need to read it.
And that would be?
With the thought of, does this need to be updated? Are they minimal changes or do we need to hire somebody to come in and totally revamp it? It's outdated.
Are you talking April or no, May?
April nineteenth.
What?
April nineteenth.
Okay, so we just add it into that session.
So we'll do the fire departments that night?
Yeah, she already had it. We've got fire department, impact fees, subdivision regs, and amendments to comp plan with guidance for zoning.
Probably won't be able to do that. I got a question here that goes along with these dates. Laurie, you got the dates right in front of you, don't you?
Four.
For the whole year?
All right, well, just a moment.
I found some discrepancies I'd like to get cleared up.
The dates on this, February tenth, or?
We moved them all to the day before.
Oh.
We went from the Wednesday to the Tuesday.
Right, I got, I got some of those, but.
So just move them all a day.
Because I've got April nineteenth.
Right.
Tentatively, May seventeenth and eighteenth being open houses. It says tentative.
Mine was shown May nineteenth, so May eighteenth we'll leave as is.
We'll probably just have the ones I doubt we're going to get. We'll know more in April.
It's like a Tuesday, Wednesday. Nineteenth is Thursday.
Yeah, it was, it was moved to seventeenth and eighteenth. That's what got posted.
Yeah.
Tentatively. June twenty-first.
Okay.
July nineteenth.
June twenty-first?
Yep, June twenty-first.
August sixteen.
July, oh, look, so.
Shouldn't it be the fourteenth?
Oh, my gosh, okay.
June, June.
Wait, is it the third? Third, oh, third.
Yeah, June twenty-one.
Well, because our meeting will be the ninth that week, so that's why I was confused.
Yep, yep, yep. So June twenty-first. These are all, these are all work sessions.
Yeah, these are the work sessions, not your regular scheduled meetings.
Normally they're.
These are the bonus meetings.
Yes.
Okay, July?
Nineteenth.
Got it?
August sixteen.
Okay.
September twenty.
Bingo.
She's been.
It's getting late.
She's been, she's been House American Legion again.
October eighteen.
Okay.
November fifteen.
Yep.
December twenty.
Okay.
We might post, we might.
We might not be.
Yeah, you may not get that.
It's got to be done by then.
December twentieth, yeah, that could be a.
We should be done by then. It could be a problem.
Nick say that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so everybody has their assignment.
Yes, read the comp plan. I'm going to be gone on the April nineteenth meeting, but I will give you my notes.
Well, your thoughts.
Okay, my thoughts.
Thoughts with some examples. And then you can go back and listen to the fire department.
I would like to.
Are you going to be available by?
I will be in Myrtle Beach, so I'll just be two hours ahead. But I probably, especially for the fire department portion.
That discussion, right?
You can put the beach in the background.
Right.
Drink with an umbrella.
Yeah, yeah, beachy drinks a lot, right, yeah.
The next thing.
Is review updated administrative plat. New with worksheet on the last nights.
That's this.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, I have not made the changes. As you know, I went to that floodplain. Writing all last week. But they have some really good stuff that I kind of wanted to share with you. And, you know, here's an example of what Ken's, you know, flow chart was. You know, so you put in your proposed ag project. Is it wall roofed structure? I mean, it doesn't have access or it's, I mean, this is just that flow chart thing. I mean, does it go to an administrative plat, short plat, whatever? But this is what I really liked. I should have made you all copies. But this is the regulatory staircase. It moves from one step to the next. Regulations from the previous step apply to all new requirements as something new is added. So our staircase will be things like admin plat, short plat, long plat, operate plat. Staircase goes up. Subdivision's required. Subdivision's required on all of this. Electricity required on all this. So we create this staircase of progression.
So each thing up will have more and more requirements. Do you have that for multiple topics?
Yes.
On each application?
Right, you know, this whole list of things, well, this whole thing, list of things we're going to require for subdivisions or not require for subdivisions will be layered into this staircase progression. You like that? Or you want me to put it together so you can further add it?
I think I like the idea.
I mean, it would be a good guide. So as you drop down the subdivision ordinance, you know, here's the administrative, that's step one. Here's the short plat. Everything in the administrative is required plus these things as you go into the full plat. Everything in here is required plus these new things. I mean, it's just a progression of more things added as you go into a higher intensity type of subdivision. Depending upon location.
Like ultimately the most complex, I mean, like a PUD.
Right. All of these different things.
Then you're not.
It's just a way to think about it.
Then you're not rewriting all of that for each one. You've got this, it's all broke out for visually where you can see it. Instead of getting to that page and reading thirty-seven things instead of ten things.
Where you can see it and so can the applicant.
Right, makes our job easier.
That's what I learned last week.
Shut up.
Wait, wasn't it on floodplains?
The book was like this page and we went through every page.
Sweet.
Every page.
It's a little highlighter.
Fire hydrant.
So they called it a fire hydrant class.
Oh, I can't imagine a floodplain.
Should be now.
Oh, me too.
This is the second time I've taken.
Yeah, I thought.
Did you pass? It wasn't a jackpot, was it? It wasn't a jackpot, was it?
No, it was, well, I think every way did. Oh, it's gonna be nice though. I took it over twenty years ago. I thought I probably should have had a refresh. Do you want to go through this? Do you think you're, so all of those things you learned tonight? Subdivision system, public water system, roads, and next time is fires.
I'm glad we did that though.
That's really helpful.
I think.
This is good information tonight. Good discussion.
Fire department's going to be amazing.
Really?
That's great.
On a fire, you put it out.
With a, with a big hose, yeah, no.
Are they, are they wanting to discuss like funding and those types of things? Because I know impact fees is a big thing for the department. It's, this is just regulations on subdivisions.
They want to talk about, oh, probably the wildland urban interface. That whole list that we went, you guys weren't here last year. They want to adopt some different regulations. At what point, you know, do they require a fairer fire take so that it's consistent?
Yeah.
Out of the three departments.
Do their road standards vary between the three departments?
We'll have to ask them. They usually just follow Valley County standards. They're trying, I said, well, what's your fire standard for roads?
Well, they should know. I mean, they got to get that big old heavy truck down there.
So it has to be able to, and those are the things I think we need to know and what we're going to learn from them because they're all going to be here.
I think that would be good.
We heard from two of them in December.
What county?
Didn't we hear from two of them in December?
It wasn't too long ago, but I think that was one of my.
Jess and the kid from Cascade, wasn't it?
Yes, Steve.
Someone forgot about us.
Yeah, that was, uh.
Uh, Mark.
Mark. Not Mark.
Not Mark.
That was Garrett.
Garrett.
So we're going to have that discussion again. And they might, you know, I think we should talk about, oh, I think it was November. Are we going to start recommending people fire-wise materials in their building construction? Maybe implementation of some fire-wise landscaping.
What about fire sprinklers and short-term rentals?
If you do it for a short-term rental, you have to do it for every single family residence.
Yeah, because it's a house.
They are single-family residences.
It is a commercial business.
Not for the state.
It's not a court. Sixty-seven, sixty-five, thirty-nine. Read your local land use planning act.
It's not right.
Isn't that below twelve guests though? Once you go over twelve deaths?
That's our definition.
That's our definition.
That's not the state's definition.
That's not the state's.
Yeah, the state's on our side of this.
I wouldn't have an issue at all. So. You know, small things. I mean, these are the things I find fascinating about the fires. You know, when you build a porch, you probably close that gap because if there's a fire, all the sparks go underneath the porch and it starts everything on fire.
Where are the scum going to live?
I know. If you leave it a concrete pad or it closes completely, you don't have that fire hazard. I mean, do we start requiring some things like that? I know that we have, you know, the roof materials have to be like Class A. You can't have wood shakes anymore. We already do that.
All the rich people do that.
I have wood shakes from years.
Our house, you know, you had a hen. Now it's his. So that's what the discussion will be about. So think about what you want to talk to the fire department about.
Well, we have to know what we can actually implement on our side. That's almost to the point of meddling.
Right, I mean, yeah, how far is too far?
Yeah.
But how far is?
Practical.
Safety. So we don't have safety and welfare.
So Cindy, who implements the snow loads currently in Valley County?
Building Department.
So is this in their whole part?
Kind of, but you guys can make some recommendations.
As far as.
Does their inspector, the one inspecting it?
Like the building, closing a deck. That to me is like a building department.
The building department doesn't have meetings.
You wouldn't care about the fire part of that. They just cared about.
They do care about safety though. They're always dealing with, you know, stair railings and all that kinds of, you know, all that. If it's a safety thing, I think they would be involved. If it's a safety thing, I think they would be involved.
Which better, should be safety.
They, I don't think they're incorporated into that part yet.
There's not like a building department, uh, board like this that makes recommendations or anything?
No, that's planning zoning commission.
And that we make recommendations to the board of county commissioners and they approve it for the building.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Also, intellectually, we have the N F P A that we have to do.
Yeah, I thought we went by the I B C and the N F P A and that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have.
There's a wildland urban interface.
Yeah.
Just think about what you think would be, I mean, and that is something that, you know, we've just always talked about. Probably not, who knows, but if we're gonna keep going out into the wildland urban interface, I mean, we need to have some smart development or our fire. Maybe that's the trade off with your off grid subdivisions.
Fire truck?
You know.
Building materials.
Right. It's just more thought out.
Think about it. You guys should have the brain trust.
So this might sound a little familiar to you, Senna, but it sounds to me like we're talking about a master checkoff list. Because you've mentioned a half a dozen things tonight of things that we should do as we go through this process. Talk, we've talked about them all, but should we put them on a list and it's our to do list? Just like the comp plan, we've got it scheduled, we'll make some decisions, we'll move on. Because I don't, I don't really wanna be sitting here two years from now still having work sessions not being done.
Okay, tell me, send me, every, send me an email. Who else? I don't, I'm out of ideas now. You talk to the fire department, I don't know what other agency.
I'd like to know what the sewer district's plans are for expansion.
We're going through their master planning process at the Payette and, um, I sat in on the Payette.
Is South Lake gonna get organized?
South Lake's not organized, Payette will not go beyond their current level.
Can't go within their current address.
I N I.
Then there's another piece of that, Ken, it's like, just like we just approved Blackhawk. Okay, forestry background. They're not pinning all those trees up on that mountainside. I mean, clean the brush out underneath it, that doesn't do anything. If the trees or limbs are touching like this, they've, they've got wildfire right there, and we just proved that without any, any.
Well, they had a wildfire plan.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see what kind of plan they come up with, because that's.
Well, you've had it.
Yeah.
John L, John L A H O G is the one that's been doing it, I'm afraid. So let's talk to them about the wildfire mitigation plan, because we worked a very long time with them before this commission would recommend approval of that. That was a hard sell. Maybe needs to be updated.
Yeah, that's, that's important.
So look at your comp plan and look at your wildfire mitigation plan, which is at the end of your subject plan.
So do you have a to do list for us? Like comp plan's on there. This is on there, wildlife plan.
Wildlife.
Do we view it? Wildfire.
A wildfire, yeah.
Mischief.
So homework assignment. We'll send it out tomorrow. Comprehensive plan. Title ten wildfire mitigation. And fire related type of questions. And then we'll, do you want me to invite North Lake? If Travis will just come talk to you?
Maybe on our next one. I think we're adding on a lot to next ones.
And then.
The fire one could take long.
We do need to work on this some more, and I'll have something hard work. Did I hit all your homework?
Well, so let's go back to our directive letter.
Where's that at? That you guys wanted answers to what they wanted you to do.
Right, it seems like there's a, a list of things that we need to be doing to address this.
Okay.
Like, is the comp plan adequate? Do we like it? Do we need to answer the question about flating zoning or what we have and some modifications? Seems like we have, we have a list of things that we're gonna have to start doing.
And that's what it's all leaning up to. This is the education piece. Before you, you make those decisions.
Are you, are you, Senna, keeping a, a list of those decisions that we need to make at the, after we get through this educational process?
Well, it's that letter. It basically is, are you satisfied with our comprehensive plan? Should we be zoning? And change your subdivision process? And then make a recommendation what you think about impact fees or development agreement or C I Ds or L I Ds. Yes, like, that's what we do every day, but you guys have to have a level of comfort before you can make these recommendations, I mean, we all learned a lot tonight.
And I also think that taking our time, especially considering what may happen with the board of commissioners within a year. Their charge to us may change. Not saying that our goal should change, but we shouldn't rush through it just to get it to, for these three, is what I was saying.
And I agree with that.
I second that.
Yeah, irregardless of, you guys, you're the recommending one.
We're not gonna change.
On your educated knowledge of local land use planning or comprehensive plan in our work. And what needs to happen in that.
It's always, you know, what I see when I first got on here, it just seemed kinda clunky, you know, at first. But it's still, if we could streamline this even more, so it makes our jobs easier. I mean, just like getting information from these two guys, that, that helped me a bunch. Because like Ken was saying, you're getting all these peoples with emotional ties to whatever. Well, I can have emotional ties to some, but do I have facts? He's giving me facts. They're just giving me emotion, emotion doesn't help me a bit.
Right.
You know, so we need facts to deal with and exactly, and that's, that makes our job easier, is the way I look at that.
You know, we really, we really do it on a relative new in the.
Except for that old fart.
I'm not sure.
Scott's though.
I'm the old guy.
This is kind of Scott too, because for years, we didn't have subdivisions.
Right.
We're just getting started again, right?
I remember when they came through when Val Wall was here, subdivision after subdivision after subdivision. Oh, yeah, and when it tanked.
West Rock?
This was a ghost town.
Well, Val Wall, which turned into West Rock, which turned into the camera again.
Yep.
I think we did seventeen subdivisions on that night.
Holy smokes!
We had some late meetings.
Yeah, that's why we put that ten o'clock cutoff.
Thank you, Jesus.
So. And then I want to make sure, because we have told people we will get this done. But I think by the end of the next meeting, you will have a much better idea of the levels of the staircase progression through the subdivision type.
Are you gonna send us some of that up?
Ken, I'd love to see, Ken, if you wanna send me your list or anybody else that has kind of worked through this, and I'll try to develop it into that table. That staircase.
Ken's is very thorough.
I have, it was interesting, I have a lot of yes ifs in here.
A lot of what?
Yes, comma, F.
Yes, but.
And that's where.
That's what those guys were saying.
Yeah, it depends.
That's where, that's the beauty of our multiple use, I'm not gonna go off on my soapbox. Because each piece of land is different, right?
I'm a, I'm, I'm a multiple use believer.
That's why this process still works good. Everything's a little bit different.
But we need to consider the other. First, we need to know what the facts are.
I think the hard part, if, if you wanted to change it, is we've already gone so many years down this route, how do you change it with it being so diverse right now?
Yeah. There's a lot of land out there yet to be developed.
There really is.
And a lot of development will be based upon where the floodplains are, the wetlands. And all of that.
Say no. He didn't hear that.
I know.
That wasn't record or anything.
All I could hear was Ken looking at me.
But, okay. So there might be some urgency about this thing.
Yes.
It's best at the top line. About the maximum minimum lot size for splits. I think the county's gonna get sued.
That's okay.
I know, but I think we need to address that and make recommendations sooner than later.
Did make, the planning and zoning commission did make a recommendation.
The new planning zoning needs to be addressed.
You guys think that you're gonna change your minds now?
One from September, is that what you're referring to?
The October meeting. We haven't even talked about that, Ken. That is not, I mean.
It's kind of on there, isn't it?
Okay, you guys wanna talk about it? Wanna go back to twenty acre splits?
Hmm, I don't know if you want twenty acre splits. Right now, the, what they approved was any split.
Any division of land requires some sort of review, and we're coming up with a review right now, and that's what we're gonna.
Name split.
There's, huh?
Go ahead.
Any size split, so everybody's on the same.
Scott, you were the big pusher of it.
Yeah.
Neil, you agreed with it. Brian was all over it.
And why is it that you feel like that's gonna bring the county into litigation?
Um. I think there's, um, I think when there's any split size that requires that subdivision ordinance can where it kicks in. I'm wondering if it crosses that bridge of a almost a regulatory taking.
Awesome. Where's the taking piece?
So, I mean, the scenarios that play out is you get five thousand acres or a thousand acre parcel. Somebody wants to buy two hundred of them. Is it subdivision? We've kind of addressed it here with this, or potentially could address it with an off grid
Yep.
type subdivision. But I'm wondering if we need to expedite that process. Just a question.
Well, yeah, we're, we need to be filled as we're working on this. That's why every time I bring this up. And every time we move further down the path. And that until you, until you have had these education pieces, does it make sense about whether to require a subject, not till tonight? Right. That, that's why we're going, why we're projecting in these education pieces so that we can develop this, the whole point is to get this developed.
To be educated enough to make the decision.
And it's not just me leading you down some certain path.
Which is fun.
But.
Sign here.
I, I don't know. Just because you have to do a subdivision plat isn't a taking. There's a lot of positive feedback on what we do. It's, it's not a taking, Ken. I mean.
I know that there's, there's two sides to that issue.
Right, but I, I guess the issue is does the county have the right to plan its own future? That's the path we put.
That's like, what was it? Who was talking to us, said over in Oregon, and he said no splits under eighty acres.
A snow bike guy.
Yes, snow bike guy.
The snow bike guy.
Yeah. And it's like.
But Oi County's the same way.
They can't even do the subdivision plat.
Mm-hmm, Oi County's very challenging.
Because you got a lot of people over here that love to open land and would love to see us do something like that.
We're not closing the door on development.
Right, you just have to go through a process.
You just have to go through a process.
Right, which in reality makes it more fair. You know, why, why is it that somebody that's got a thousand acres that wants to pull off two hundred wouldn't have to go through the process, where if somebody has twenty acres and they wanna pull off five acres, does have to go through the process.
And what if that two hundred acres, the only way to get there is by driving through, you know, underbrush? What if that two hundred acres is a floodplain and there's no base flood elevation? Can't do that division. We'll be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program.
They would still, they would still have to be granted a building permit through the county, even if they built a structure in that floodplain, or they were attempted to, you would have to get a building permit.
Well, why, why are we gonna enforce that ordinance? We don't allow development of floodplain.
Right.
The National Flood Insurance Program says that any division of land, subdivision is a verb, not a noun. We treat the word subdivision as a noun.
Right.
Region ten treats it as a verb. So any division of land has to have a base flood elevation determined on it. Even if it's a thousand acres.
Well, tell me why, I mean, because Scott and I both got a little fired up on that. Why the commissioners threw out that hundred and sixty acres as a, on a hundred and twenty day, you know, moratorium? Moratorium? What was, did we ever hear the reasoning behind it?
Well, the hundred and sixty was brought in by me from the valley soil, I don't recall whether or not I specifically, I don't even remember exactly how that happened.
I'm still that, because it's a hundred and sixty acres.
Right, right.
I'm still that, because it's a hundred and sixty acres.
Right, I think that was brought up, see, I didn't even remember that. Um, so they put that in the emergency moratorium. When that came before the planning and zoning commission in October, you guys did, like, the hundred and sixty acres, you said any division of land requires some sort of review. And that's what we're trying to come up with, is what level of review are we doing? In the meantime, the board went with the planning and zoning commission's recommendation that any division of land requires.
I can also, the, the exceptions for that are granted.
So it's not taking, you can still do it, you just have to go through the process.
Right.
That's not a taking. If you illegally split it, I'm not gonna take you to court. We're just not gonna issue a building permit for you. You can still split an original parcel, something that predated April twenty ninth of nineteen seventy. You can't tell me these ranchers and farmers that have had their properties, you know, since nineteen oh eight. You know, they can't split off their properties, because if they have had that piece of property since nineteen oh eight, it is an original parcel and they can split it.
They can split it once through a record of survey, is that right?
By recording a deed.
Recording a deed, okay.
That makes sense, I mean, you guys know so much more now than you did in October.
Well, both of us.
Right.
No, these work sessions have been fantastic.
I mean, Scott was, I missed a couple. Probably the last day I've ever heard of him.
You're saying he did not need a microphone?
I probably still needed a microphone.
Speak up, Scott.
Yeah, it was a confusing meeting, but they came, they talked about a lot of things, getting to a conclusion. And so now our goal is to get this done. With educated minds. So that's what we're doing.
Did you, you looked, right? How many original parcels are still in the county? I can't remember. Didn't we look at that?
Well, we didn't come up with a number, but it was that.
Was tons.
Basically, we're looking at those big maps, but that doesn't necessarily which ones are original parcels.
Okay.
We kind of look at that as the individual case.
Mad, you have very many original parcels left.
I don't have, we have any.
The Davises don't have any?
I don't know.
That's the predate what date?
Seventies, twenty ninth of nineteen seventy.
Oh.
That's when the subdivision ordinance was first adopted.
You guys have done some splits and.
I'd have to look at that.
You have.
Probably. There's a whole bunch of homesteads all crossed together. But yeah, probably.
But you guys got it.
Yeah. Right, was it pre-seventy or, cause it's not a.
You know, the Hasbro, they out, they had to do a bunch of one acre, one, a lot of subdivisions to give to other kids, not elder kids. Eric, we just gave ours away, so whatever.
You got a road name after, yeah?
Couple of them. We got road names.
You got road names.
Read that.
Okay, um. So you're gonna get us a.
You'll have your homework.
Homework.
This is our priority. Think about this one. And if anybody wants to give me their recommendations, I will try to piece together.
Just give it to you tonight.
That staircase. My new term. We're gonna have a staircase.
We ready to adjourn? We are adjourned.
Three hours, we did it, guys.
Good job.
I was supposed to come here and grab this.
My one amen and imes before I leave.